Thrown together at the last minute last Wednesday, so unfortunately she wasn't able to be here. And Bubba Alsop, I just talked to him on the phone, he is going to try to get down here. He's been making phone calls, trying to get the vote out there. So hopefully he'll be here soon, as soon as he can make it. But right now, though, we're gonna talk to Barb and Colleen. And I guess I'll just start and ask you guys a simple question, not so simple, I guess, with all the controversy that's been going on the last two years. But I'll start with you, Colleen. Why are you running for the board, the school board?
Well, for the last few years, I have been attending the school boards pretty regularly, just on a volunteer basis, as a parent and as a community member concerned with education. And I just, I've been concerned about the direction that education's taking here in Missoula. And we have some great teachers and great schools. And I'm getting the feeling that some of our quality portions of our education are being compromised. So I wanna be a part of the board and be at the table making some decisions, being a part of the decision-making process.
Okay. Hi, MCAT, this is Tracy. Can I help you?
Yeah, I wanted to ask why administrators aren't being cut instead of teachers?
Okay, I don't know if these guys can answer that. I think Barb is actually still seated on the board.
Okay, well, if you just listen to the answer, that would be great.
Okay, I'm gonna let Barb introduce herself and do her little schmell that Colleen got to do. And then we'll try to answer that question for you, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Well, I have been on the board for the past three years. And when I ran for the board three years ago, I was doing so calling for increased fiscal responsibility and accountability, as well as increased access to meetings and information, and also hoping for smaller class sizes. And as I was trying to decide whether or not to run again, I looked back at what I was saying three years ago and realized that a lot of those things are still undone. And I feel my work isn't done, so I've decided to put in three more years. And to the question from our listener, or viewer, I guess, this is in radio. What we have at this point are simply proposals from the administration. And they haven't proposed any cuts to central administration yet. It's still possible for the board to make suggestions to the administration that the board as a whole would vote on.
Right, it's not a done deal yet, as far as I understand.
Yeah, this is still just proposed.
You're gonna vote on it.
And the budget isn't adopted until August, so we have plenty of time to look at things.
Great, and I would, so is it true that people should still try to be as involved in the process as possible?
Oh, I think so.
Since you aren't deciding on the budget until August?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah, I think there's still plenty of time to be involved.
Great, okay.
Not on that particularly. I know that why, when asked why the cuts are being looked at just from the teachers and nowhere else, the response has been that, you know, in the general fund, teacher's salary make up the bulk of the budget. And so you gotta go where the bulk of the money is going. But what needs to be done is really just taking a good look at the budget and going line item by line item throughout all categories, through all line items, and seeing if a little bit could be skimmed here and there. There just needs to be an alternative plan. And there isn't an alternative plan. It's like, this is the proposal. And like Barb said, it hasn't been voted on. But neither has an alternative plan come forward. So as of yet, I think you talk about that at the next board meeting in May.
Oh, this is May. Okay, we have another phone call. Thank goodness, just a minute of time. Hi, welcome to MCAT. Do you have a question for one of our board candidates?
Yes, my question is, why has the board adopted a policy that people have to call in advance before they can make a public comment at a school board meeting?
That's a hard question.
You know, you're actually, people are actually asking questions about the actual school board. And we have the candidates here, so I know that unfortunately Barb's the only one that's sitting on the board that can answer any of these questions. Oh, great, Bubba's here.
Well, good.
There we go. Can you answer, do you wanna address that real quick?
Well, some of the reason goes to the interpretation of the state constitution and the open meetings law, and how that relates to public notice before you can discuss something at a public meeting. The Montana School Boards Association has made the decision, that a very narrow decision, it's been the ruling from the Attorney General's office informally, that this is the appropriate way to do this, to avoid causing any problems with proper notification. And I would support changing that, actually. I think it's very narrow and it really restricts public participation in itself, which is a violation of the state constitution. It restricts the spontaneity of people being able to get up there at the last minute with a concern.
Hi, this is Tracy, welcome to MCAT. Do you have a question?
I have a rather unusual request. I'd like to make a comment on the last question, if that's all right.
Actually, we're only taking calls in the form of a question tonight.
Okay, let's phrase it in the form of a question.
Okay.
Given all of the criticism that's been levied at the board lately, and the revelations by Janet Scott about the disappearance of the line item disclosure, and criticism about indoor air quality, is there at least a perception that this maneuver by certain board members to limit public comment is actually an attempt to simply silence the public? I'd like you to comment that on that, please.
Okay, thank you for your call. I'm actually going to let Bubba, who's just joined us, have an opportunity to introduce himself and talk about what he wants to bring to the board. And then we'll, I'll have each board candidate address that question for you. Thank you for calling.
Forget the question.
Okay, introduce myself. My name is Bubba Alsop, and I am running for the board tomorrow. And I'm getting on the tail end of the discussion here. Apparently we're discussing the recent cutbacks of the time allotted for the public to speak. I did research that and looked into that. And I know that they are meeting the state standards for doing that. I would agree to having more time. I would agree to going back to five minutes to have the public speak. I don't think it took up that much time. I know there was some meetings that went extremely long and going back and looking at the history of this. But I surely don't think that the board is attempting to silence anybody. They are not trying to silence the public opinion at all. I think that the board has to depend on the public opinion. It's the public's opinion on who goes on the board. So I think that's the ultimate voice right there. So I don't think there's any ideas here of the board or the administration to silence anybody from speaking.
Hi, this is MCAT. Can I put you on hold while we finish addressing this other question?
Sure, just wanted to make sure I could call in, all right?
Okay, I'm gonna put you on hold, all right?
Great.
Okay. Okay, did you wanna address that also?
I don't have a problem with the num, well, the limits. I think it went from five minutes to three minutes. And that, you know, that recommendation was tolerable. What really, I think, puts kibosh on spontaneity is having the six day, if you're speaking to an item that's not on the agenda, on the board's agenda, if you're speaking to an item that's not on the board's agenda, you need six days' notification to do that. And that really does squelch spontaneity. I mean, there might be something that comes up at the last minute that a parent or a community member feels like they really, it's imperative to get the word out now or ask a question about now.
Does city council have the same restriction, does anybody know?
I think, maybe Jolmo's?
Maybe back there, if they have the same restriction where you have to have a six day?
No, not, I don't.
I think it's related to time.
For public comment?
Yes.
No, no, public comment can be that meeting. No one submits any notion of what they're gonna say beforehand.
Is there a minute limit for speaking?
No, there have been in the past, but there isn't anymore.
Okay. Okay, so you'd like to see that you don't have to, if someone wants public comment, they don't have to have, come in and or write something six days in advance?
Yeah, I just think that we should be welcoming as much public comment and opinion as we can to make some personal decisions.
Oh, people are calling now, hang on a second, okay.
That's a good topic.
Hi, I'm gonna put you on hold, thank you for calling, and?
Actually, I'm Jim McGrath, I'm on city council. I can clear up your question about what we do.
Thanks.
Think about a second.
Thanks for calling, okay.
We do not restrict the comment, or the topic, or whatever at all. We do have a time limit of three minutes, which we enforce particularly when we have a lot of time constraints. In other words, if we don't have that much on our agenda, we might let it go a little bit. But so that's pretty much how we handle, we have not had any problem over the course of time with any legal issues. In fact, most of the people who raise legal issues about the open meeting laws insist that we allow comment, and that's why we allow comment. And we always err on the side of comment. Also, by the way, we allow public comment on each action item before we take action on it.
Oh.
I hope that helps you out with understanding how we do it. We've never had a real legal issue with it at all. And I'd like to see the public be able to come in and tell us anything that's on their mind, which might have just occurred to them.
So you would probably like to see that on the school board as well?
I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, I think it often, we've had people come in and bring something up that we hadn't really known about, and we were able to then, you know, ask the administration to address it, or make some kind of response to it. And it really helps us conduct the public's business much better. So I don't see the downside to it. Occasionally, it lengthens the meeting a little bit. But if you have a tight gavel, people understand what you're really there for. We don't have a lot of problem with it.
Okay, thank you so much for calling.
Sure.
Great.
Bye.
Bye. Does anybody wanna comment on what Jim just said, before I take the other? Bubba, would you like to?
I just wanna make one comment. I did ask about how that's to be handled. And the idea behind it was not to be a restriction, that you cannot speak if you don't get in on the agenda. The idea was if you have something that's not on the agenda, if you would cough ahead for, you know, and get everything on the agenda, then the people that are on the board can look and see what's on the agenda and be prepared to speak to that if they so desire. And I think that's a good idea. But at the same time, I don't think it should be a restriction saying that you can't speak unless you get it on agenda. But I think it would be a good courtesy if somebody has something for an agenda item, to call ahead and say, hey, I'd like to see this on the agenda and I would like to speak to it. And that way, the board members can bring whatever they have, I mean, there's tons of information that they have, to bring information to air quality, or whatever the question is, and then speak to it.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna take this other phone call. Caller, thank you for holding for so long, did you have a question?
Yes, I did, a couple of important questions, yes, I think are important. For one, would you, any of you, support bringing back prayer and Bible reading into the public schools? Or if a child had a Bible, would you allow that or prayer? Second of all, do you allow children who are friends with each other to embrace and, you know, cuddle one another in brotherly love? Or are you against that sort of thing? Because in a lot of schools, for some reason, that's against the rules.
Okay, thank you for your question, caller. And we'll address that briefly here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Also, for the last person that called in, please call again. I'm sorry that I didn't catch your phone call there. Unfortunately, tonight, we're a little short-staffed and we don't have anyone in the back fielding questions, unless actually you'd like to do that for us. We have a, would that be okay? Okay, I'm gonna take this one real quick. Hi, welcome to MCAT. Can I put you on hold? Oh, she's got him. Hello?
Okay, okay, let me go back to the prayer question.
Okay.
We?
That's a hefty one there.
Well, actually, it's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry. Because, you know, we're basically prohibited from actual prayer. I think a moment of silence is allowed in schools, and that sort of thing. But what I would support is a study of world religions as part of social studies. Because I think one of the ways you learn about diversity, cultural diversity, and begin to really get an appreciation of it, is through world religion. You know, Christianity isn't the only religion, even though it's the predominant one in the United States. And on the other issue, I am, I don't have a comment, I guess, because I'm not really sure if there is a policy, if there's a policy just according to school. You know, I, so I guess I can't comment on that one.
Oh, you can, okay. How about you, Colleen, would you like to address that, please?
Yeah, I'll start with the latter half of the question with the huging. I'm not sure if there is a distinct policy. I haven't heard of that one, and I can't imagine being in a, especially in the primary grades, where they're, they just glom onto their teacher and hug. And I know when I go in and volunteer, that's what the kids do, you know? They just glom onto you. And I've never stopped to think that, wow, I shouldn't be doing this, there might be a law against it. And as far as the, you know, the prayer in school, I think it's pretty clear, clearly defined within the law.
Okay, and Bubba?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I think it is cut and dry, because we are mandated by the circuit court of what we can and can't do as administrators and teachers. But I also want to remind my caller that mandate does not apply to the students. The students are very free to express whatever religion they believe in. They're free to meet on campus, they're free to hold Bible studies, they're free to read the Bible if that's what they choose to do, or any other scriptural test, checks from any other religion. So there's no restrictions on the students of what they can practice in religious activity. And I think that's the way it should be. But there is a restriction on the teacher saying that you're not to promote this. And I think that's good, I think that's healthy, and I think that's the way it should be.
Okay, let's take this phone call. Good evening, welcome to MCAT. Do you have a question for our board candidates?
Yes, I do, I'd like to ask a broad question for any or all of the candidates. The issue of pesticide use in schools has been a very active question all around the country. Several states have passed laws and regulations either trying to give parents and teachers and staff and students the right to know about the pesticide use, or to regulate the use, considering how toxic pesticides are, especially to the developing systems of infants and children who are often thought of as little adults. But in terms of the permeability of their skin, the detoxification systems of the liver and kidneys.
Okay.
Of course, are very vulnerable, so.
All right, let's, I'm gonna start with Bubba this time. We'll sort of take turns going around here. Bubba, would you like to address that question?
You know, I'm not positive that I know exactly what chemicals are being used and what aren't being used. I haven't studied that far. But I do know the fact that it's true, I used to sell chemicals. And every chemical that is used in the school district must be supplied an MSD sheet and material safety data sheet, and that will be on file in the administration office. And I think if you have a question of a certain chemical or a certain substance being used in your schools, you should check that out and find out what chemicals are being used and take a chance to read those MSD sheets. And, you know, I think that's a right-to-know thing.
Okay, how about, how about Colleen?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what chemicals are currently being used, but, you know, absolutely, we're talking about, you know, hazards of all kinds if they're, I mean, I know there's safer techniques to use. So I don't know which ones are currently being used, but present the research, you know?
So you're saying that once you get on the board, you would research that?
Absolutely, or listen to the public who is much, you know, more well-versed in that subject and just listen to it, absolutely.
How about you, Barb?
I think that we could probably do a better job of backing off chemicals, including, you know, some of the carpets we use. I think that research is pretty clear that there's some, you know, there's some definite problems with pesticides and chemicals, the different chemicals used. We haven't, we have no policy on it, and I think it's something to look at eventually, to have an indoor air quality policy, et cetera, et cetera.
All right.
Okay.
There is a policy set by the states and the national called best practices. And I know that the school does do everything they can to abide by the best practices policies, which means that you don't paint when school, kids are in school, you don't lay carpet and use certain chemicals and carpet glues and things like that. And I think we should be very strict on those other practices.
We do do that, we've always done that. But the point is, even, that is fairly, a very minimal standard compared to what I think that research is showing now.
Okay.
Hello, just real quick.
Actually?
Mr. Alsop, I just wanted to mention there's a state law that was passed a couple of legislatures ago concerning notification of pesticide use in public buildings. And I'd just like to recommend to whoever makes it to the school board that they look into that, because that law hasn't been implemented.
Has not been implemented?
Not.
Not. Okay, thank you so much, caller.
Thank you.
We're gonna take another phone call here.
Yeah.
Oh, did I just cut that person off? I think I did, I'm sorry. Please call back, sorry about that. I'm just not too handy with the phone here tonight. Actually, Bubba, I wanted, while we're, don't have a phone call right now. Oh, there we go again. Hello, I'm sorry, did I, are you the one I cut off there?
I heard you saying you cut somebody off, but I thought I was supposed to be hanging up.
Oh, yeah, you were supposed to be hanging up, sorry. Okay, thank you. Bubba, Colleen and Barb got a chance before you got here to talk about why, I'd asked them why they were running for the school board. So I'm gonna give you an equal opportunity here to?
Do you have a time limit?
No, they didn't really have a, I think they have a time limit. Well, this isn't as strict as Wednesday night, so.
This could be a speech. No, I'm running for the school board. I've got three children that are, you know, they're four, six, and eight. I've got one in kindergarten, one in second grade, and one in preschool. My wife went through this school system and all of her brothers, and they have an incredible education here. I think anybody who's been through the Missoula school system has been proud of the system we have, and as far as the education and the teachers that we have. And we have an outstanding group of teachers, especially for the pay they have. Unbelievable, and I want that to stay that way. I would like for my kids to have that opportunity. And that's the main reason I'm running. I wanna, I wanna be involved in my kids' education. And, you know, I think that I've got a lot of qualities that can help the board. I mean, with the business experience I have had, and the past teaching experience, and the studies that I had in my master's degree, I think there's a lot of things there that I can bring to the board that will help out. And that's why I'm running.
Okay, thank you.
Does that shorten, quick?
That was good, we're gonna, I'm gonna, try to take this phone call here. Welcome to MCAT, do you have a question for our board candidates?
Yes, I have. We've heard about claims that large schools subsidize small schools. And I'm wondering if small schools are really more expensive than large schools? And why or why not?
Okay, thank you. I'll start with you, Barb. What is your, what is your opinion on that, or have you done any research?
I, actually, I've looked at a lot of stuff on small and large school size, but I haven't really seen the data the caller's talking about regarding difference in cost. I would, hey, so, I don't know, I can't speak to that.
You can't speak to that?
Yeah.
How about, how about you, Colleen?
I've heard that, too. I mean, that's been what's circulating around, is that, you know, some of the bigger schools are subsidizing the smaller schools. And I think that argument surfaced last year with, you know, the whole school closure issue. And I disagree. I think that if you have a very strong, top-heavy central administration that's trying to, you know, control and have the control over each of these individual schools coming from this, you know, top-down, that's expensive. But if you give the schools a little bit more autonomy, I mean, I have the utmost confidence and trust in the teachers and the administrators and parents and community within a school building to be able to make some decisions. And if a school has more autonomy and is able to make those, I mean, really have a say in decisions for their particular school, then the information's coming from that level. It's not top-heavy here, trying to disseminate information and keep control over all of them. It's coming from within each individual school. And I think some real creative solutions to some of the problems that we're having right now would surface if we allowed more autonomy. And I really do mean a real say, not just a site-based group that doesn't necessarily have real decision-making power, but truly having some power that way.
Okay, thank you. Bubba?
Exactly how do you phrase that question?
I think?
You said the larger schools are?
He said it's supporting, where the larger schools subsidizing smaller schools.
Okay. You know, I don't know anything, I haven't heard that. That's the first I've heard of that. I know the way school funding works, and I know that all schools are paid the exact same base. So when you do have a real small country school, and they have the same base that a large school in town gets, you know, they have a lot less expenses. And people say, well, why can these little schools out here in the country run so well, and these guys in the city can't manage their money? Well, you know, when they get the same set number of dollars for their elementary school with 75 kids in it that we get for an elementary school with 500 kids in it, something's not right. And that's not our fault, that's state funding and the way it's set up. And that has to be redone, has to be redone. We have to, we have to make our boys know.
Yeah, I didn't know that myself there. That's a little shocking, isn't it?
Well, that's why our big cities are in a mess right now. You know, it's not just Missoula. There's, you know, there's Great Falls, there's, all the AA schools are having problems right now with funding, all of us. And it's, we all have, we're all in the same boat, and it's a little boat.
Right. I'm gonna take this other phone call here. Good evening, caller, welcome to MCAT. Do you have a question for one of our board candidates?
Yes, I'm interested in different methods for reducing the cost of administration. Can you tell me, candidates, would you favor a cost-of-living freeze for the administration salaries?
Okay, who did I start with last time? Did I start with you, Barb? Okay, I'm gonna start with you, Colleen, because you haven't taken one first, yeah.
That's the question that's circulating, too, is, because it seems like the proposal just to balance the budget this year is coming strictly at the expense of teachers. There's no other, so that is the question that's on everybody's mind, is, you know, where's the balance here, where's the, you know, trade-off for, you know, not just teachers, but administrators? So, yeah, for a pay freeze? Yeah, yeah, yes. You know, we need to keep some sense of balance, you know, if we're going to be, I'll just end it with that, yes, I would be.
Okay, Bubba?
Well, I guess my question would be, you know, the administrators that I'm thinking of, the school principals, who last year, or year before, had 200 to 300 kids in their school, now they have 500 kids in their school, and they're doing at least another 50% more work, I think it would only be fair that they would get the same percentage increase as the teachers. That's the way I feel about it. I think, I don't think they're doing any less work. The administration has been cut, and cut severely. And I would say that, you know, I would like to see some places where we could cut administration. Everybody's talking about cutting administration, and I'm all for that, if there's some good places to cut it. If there's some excess out there, if there's some waste up there, if we have people that aren't working and they're just sitting on the payroll, let's get them off. But if we have people that are working 80 hours a week and we cut that service out of there, I ask, you know, what service do we take away from our teachers in order to cut the administration? That's the only thing I'm scared of. I would not be in favor of immediately saying, yeah, let's just freeze all this, and then losing four or five of some of our best principals. I think that would be ludicrous. Those guys have been in the system for years. They were teachers, you know, they're all tenured teachers, and, or most of them are. And so I think, I think before I would say, yes, I would cut them. I would like to see more about the budget and see where we could cut otherwise.
Caller, I'm gonna, unless you have another question, I'm gonna actually say goodbye to you so I could clear up the line for us, okay? Thank you for calling. And Barb, I'm gonna let you, oh?
Yeah, I, well, first off, I think we need to have a line item budget, a proposed budget to look at. We haven't seen one in the three years I've been on the board. It's very difficult to say, let's look at the budget when we've never seen one before it's final. I would favor at least some reductions in administration, whether it's a pay freeze or something, simply because I think there needs to be a bit of, there needs to be some across the board cuts. We're cutting 5% out of our budget, and the administration isn't having a feather ruffled. And I do- And I just, you know, I believe that, um, if, if that happened at the university, all heck would break loose. And so, I, I, I can't believe that, um, teachers, you know, and, and the public are saying, "Yeah, this is all right." Uh, we, the administration hasn't had any cuts to speak of. They've, they've reshuffled positions and it appears that there are fewer positions, but in fact, there's as many people or more in the administration. And also, there's, um, um, some of the proposed, um, offloading from the general fund to, to grant funds of administrators last year actually didn't happen because those grant funds didn't come through in some cases. So, we, in, in effect, um, the administration cuts that were proposed last year didn't all happen this year, didn't actually happen, all of them. And so, in some ways, they took even less of a cut last year than people thought, so.
Did you, did you have something to add to that?
I was just clarifying, I just wanted to clarify, I was, um, it's not that I was saying, "Just do that to balance the budget," or, I mean, because I obviously wouldn't do that, I'm, I'm, I just wanna reiterate that it, it needs to be a broader, uh, uh, selection of where we're making the cut. So, I'm not saying, "Yeah, we'll just cut the administration," and, no, it, it needs to, you know, if, if the teachers are feeling it here and if a different program's feeling it here, I, I think that we need to just be broader and we need to be fair about where we're looking.
All right, let's take this phone call. Hi, do you have a question for our, um, school board candidates?
Yes, I do. Um, I feel that one of the real victims of, um, all the changes and the school closures has been, um, with teacher and staff morale. And I'd like to ask the, um, candidates, if they were elected or re-elected, um, what they feel they could do to boost that morale and make the teachers feel like they do have a say and that their opinions matter and that they can have some input in, um, their futures as far as, you know, changes or school closure.
Okay, thank you caller. I'm gonna start with, um, you this time Barb.
Well, we're in the middle of contract negotiations right now with the teachers and the rest of the staff. And I would hope that, um, that, that would do, whatever we end up with in a final contract would do something to help morale. We do have, I, I believe we're at approximately a three percent increase in the base and, um, so that is a, a fairly good increase at this point, I'm not sure where we'll end up finally in negotiations. Um, I, I think, um, there also needs to be a sense on the part of the staff that they can make suggestions and make constructive criticism without fear of retribution. And, and that would, I think, would go a long ways toward, um, improved morale. And, um, I, I guess some of it is just, uh, having a chance to sit down with, with the staff and try to work out some of those things. I know there's some of the things in both the contract language that we're working on now in negotiations that address a lot of those issues. You know, in a roundabout way, you know, it's family leave or it's things like this, but things that would, um, help morale if, if there were some, um, non-financial incentives for, for the staff, so, those would be my suggestions.
Okay, um, Colleen?
Um, that's sad to hear that, you know, we, our teachers' morals are, are down because, you know, they, I can only imagine how hard it must have been to go into class the next day after hearing that, you know, ten, uh, K-5 teachers are gonna be cut and ten, six through eight, uh, teachers are going to be cut. And then having to conduct yourselves in front of the class knowing that you've been given this type of news. And as a board member, again, I am really, I really would encourage all kinds of input. I agree with what Barb said about, I've heard, um, people saying they've, teachers have said that, uh, there is a fear factor, that they don't feel like they feel free enough to come forward and, uh, express themselves or what's going on or whatever, and, uh, boy, that's, that's sad to hear because we should be turning to the teachers first to say, "Hey, what, what do we need to be doing here, how are things going, what, what are your suggestions for improvement? Give us some constructive criticism, we can only get better through constructive criticism and really open it up to the teachers." I, that's one thing that's really missing at some of these board meetings, not that they want another meeting to go to, but that we're not, uh, hearing, hearing from teachers unless it's like the public comment that was held last week where, you know, it was in response to their positions being cut, and so.
Thank you, Colleen.
Mm-hmm.
Bubba, how about you?
Well, I've, I've said all along since I've looked at this, that, you know, there needs to be more communication, um, amongst the, the teachers and the community on these issues so that, that people know the facts. You know, uh, that's the first thing I've noticed, uh, in this, this campaign is all the misinformation that's floating around and, and they need the chance, um, the, the other night, I, I was really frustrated by the meeting that, you know, we were hearing a lot of things and, and I was like, you know, "You guys have the answers to a lot of these questions," you know, and, and it's just building here, you know, "Give us some, you know, answer some of these questions." And I would like to see more open meetings where there is a chance for, I would like to see a, a, a series of, of meetings set up. I know, nobody wants to see more meetings, but I think there has to be a meeting set up, uh, on a periodic basis with the teachers and the teacher representatives to say, "What do you think on these things?" and get their influence. I mean, we're, we're nothing without our teachers and we're nothing without their input. And, and we've got, and, I mean, that's where the rubber hits the road. And so, we've, we've gotta be able to, to have some kind of dialogue with our teachers and, and go to them and ask for their support and their ideas and their, their, I mean, we, we got some good, good ideas of the day for cutting, you know, there was an excellent idea, one of the teachers mentioned, you know, uh, you know, "We're, we're pretty top-heavy, we got a lot of older, you know, teachers, we've, we've offered them fifteen hundred dollars to retire and that's nothing. Um, why don't we pay their insurance for a couple of years, that wouldn't take any money out of this budget." I mean, that's, that's a viable thing that we can go look at now and I'm, I'm looking around saying, "Hey, how does that work?" You know, because that's a great idea and that came right from one of the teachers. I mean, we need to have more, more times like that. And I, I, I do think it's sad that, that a teacher has to get up at a public meeting for public response and make his voice known there. There should be more avenues for that and, and, um, and I, I strongly agree with, with, uh, getting more communication with the teacher. I think it can't do anything but help morale.
Okay, thank you, let's take this next phone call. Hi, do you have a question?
Yes, I have, I'm wondering what people mean when they use the term budget. Uh, does going through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, does that mean going through the proposed budget? Does it include looking at actual expenditures? I, I'm not clear about what people mean when they use that term.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start with you for that, Colleen, it's your turn. Thank you very much for calling.
Well, from what I know of the budget, um, it seems like we have, we, the board has a, a budget that is just the proposed budget for the year. Um, but there isn't a budget expenditure comparison that's given to the board on a monthly basis. So, you have the budget over here, what you're proposing to spend, but you need to see what you've already spent. You've, you, you need to see your actuals, what you've already spent. And, um, in order to, uh, to make any sound financial decisions, you have to have a variety, uh, put before you. Not just a document that shows you your proposed, proposed budget and then another document that shows you something else. Um, that's the big thing that we're hearing now is that currently, um, some board members feel like they're not getting the appropriate report that's in front of them, a, a really, um, legible document that, that goes before them that shows budget, actuals, expenditures, last year's, next year's, this year. I mean, to have some comparison there and that's about all I have on that.
Okay, Bubba?
Um, you know, and maybe there would be a better form to get that information. I, I would say that, that, that information is available because I'm, I've been in the process, a slow process of going through and starting and saying, "Okay, let's see what they spent, let's see what they're budgeting and, and why is this budget more than what they spent?" you know, and, and going through and looking at that. And, you know, I've found some pennies here and there where we could save. Um, and, and like we said the other day, pennies add up, you know, if we can, if we can add up thirty-seven thousand dollars with the pennies, then we save a teacher. You know, um, or even less. So, you know, that's what has to be done, we have to look at what we spent and what we're budgeting and find out, you know, is this budget real? I mean, can we take some of this out and save a teacher position? Can we take some out on this one and save a position? Are we spending too much here, you know, and, and a lot of those questions, you know, we don't have the wherewithal to, you know, how can I as a board member know exactly how many gallons of chemicals are needed for a certain floor job, you know? I, you, we can't know all that, but at the same time, we can look at what was spent and what is budgeted and say, you know, is this, does this, does this match up here, are we, are we budgeting more than we should? And I think that's what we need to do is go through, and then maybe at the same time as we're doing that, we need to look for places where, "Wow, this looks like it's out of whack." We need to, we need to, we need to delve into this and find out why we spent so much on this line item right here and see if we can find some more room. That's what I'm talking about by going through the budget. I'm talking about looking at what we spent and what we're planning on spending and making sure that those things add up. I mean, that's the way you, that's the way you go through a budget. Um, that's the way I do it in my business, you know, I go through and look at what I budgeted and what I spent and I say, "Oh, wow, I spent too much here, I've gotta cut that this year," you know, and I start looking for ways to do that. Um, we've gotta do the same thing with the school board.
Barb?
I agree, we need to look at the budget. We need to look at, uh, previous, I like to see two years budgets plus two years of actual expenditures. We don't receive that information in, in that format currently. We don't receive a proposed line item budget. All public agencies, the city, the county, the university, everybody provides information in that format. Missoula County Public Schools is the only public entity I've ever seen that does this and I've been doing public budgets for twenty years, excuse me. And I, we need, and it's not any, it's not rocket science and it would take a matter of fifteen minutes to sit down and plug in the numbers to, that formula, to present that to us in that format so we have a history to look at, so we can see where some cuts need to be made. What we receive now as a proposed budget is two pieces of paper that says, "This is what we're gonna cut and you don't have any choice." And, and that's not okay with me.
Okay, uh, let's take this next phone call. Hi, welcome to MCAT, do you have a question for one of our board candidates?
Yeah, hi, actually, I have a question I'd like to address to all three of them. Um, and it, it's a pretty simple one. I'm wondering why it is that the teacher's salaries are so sacrosanct. Uh, what do they make, about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, is that right?
Is that right?
Not a beginning.
About the average salary?
Not a beginning, teacher.
I think it averages out to somewhere around there.
Yeah, and, you know, what's the average salary of the person in the community who pays the taxes? I think it's much lower than that. And I think the problem you've developed over the years is you're spending, what, ninety percent of your budget in salaries? Majority of it is teacher's salaries. Why don't you cut the teacher's salaries? Why don't they all take like a five percent or ten percent across-the-board pay cut? We could keep all the schools open, we could have a better curriculum, um, you know, we could do a lot, lot of things. I used to have two children in the public schools and I took them out. And the reason I did was because the resources and everything, it all goes for the teacher's salaries and it all goes for the administrator's salaries and you've gotta cut it out. And I'd like you to all address that question if you could. I just caught your show and I'm, I'm hoping somebody else asks that question too because that's, that's the main problem here, isn't it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I can't say anything, I have to stay neutral, but, um, so, um, let's start with, um, let's start with you, I think it's your turn.
Okay, I think it's my turn.
Okay.
Um, guys, um, I, I can, I can see where this gentleman's coming from, but you've gotta understand, um, I, you know, that's, if you look at teacher salaries compared to some of the other professions, and remember that these guys are professionals and they are, they're, they have, I think, one of the most important jobs there is. You know, uh, I have a business and I, and I, and I'm a professional salesperson, but, uh, if I don't sell, I don't, I don't eat, you know, and I could probably do with a rat for a while. Uh, but, but you know, somebody who, who's not doing a good job of teaching, you know, you're, you're, you're talking about somebody's mind that you're teaching and, you know, that is such an awesome responsibility. Um, I think we need to remember that these are professionals. And, um, you know, uh, we're not complaining about the doctors and, and anybody else that's a professional and what their salaries are. The only reason we're complaining about it is because it's coming out of tax dollars. And, uh, that's an easy one to hit at. But, um, I, I think, you know, especially when you're looking at trying to improve staff morale, you know, you wanna start talking about cuts, um, you know, that, I think that's, uh, I, I don't think that's a possibility.
Okay, Colleen?
Well, we need to drive quality people and committed people to education, they are in charge of educating our youth after all. I mean, that's, goes without saying. And, uh, I, I love the comment, you know, "Teachers only work nine months a year and, you know, wouldn't you love to have..." And it's like people who make comments like that, I would bet haven't spent a whole lot of time in the classroom because I know that I go into my children's classrooms and will just casually say, "What'd you do this weekend?" And, you know, they'll say, "Oh, we were in the classroom," or, you know, that they hang out long after school's been dismissed to organize their classroom and they're, they're way before. So, anyway, um, we have to pay our teachers, we have to, and.
Couldn't do it.
Obviously, people don't go into the teaching profession for the money, you know, they're not going into, they're, they're going in there for their commitment to, uh, educating our children, but, uh, I can't see cutting their salaries.
Okay, Barb?
Well, actually, um, if you compare us with other cities around the state, we're kind of behind in salaries, our teachers. And it, as Colleen mentioned, it puts us at risk of, um, not, not being the favorite place for those, um, college graduates to, to stay when they get out of school here in Missoula. And, um, and, and it, it prevents us from, you know, just hanging on to teachers too. And so, I think that, you know, while we need to, we need to be, you know, frugal in what we do and, and we are using interest-based bargaining in the negotiating process this year, which, which really tries to look at both sides' needs and, and reach a compromise rather than, you know, digging in, digging your heels in the ground and, and playing hardball. And so, I think that we can actually, it, you know, it could be much higher. Um, that, we, if, if, um, we weren't using interest-based bargaining, you know, salary raises might even be more. Um, I think this is a reasonable amount, it's still, it leaves us probably three percent behind the other cities in the state right now anyway, so.
Okay, um, I'm gonna take this next phone call here, looks like we have about ten more minutes, I think we'll go till nine tonight.
Ten, ten.
Oh, ten, oh, you're right. It's late, isn't it?
We've run way over.
We're still in the same time zone here.
I know, and it, it's, uh, I really wanna thank you guys for coming down here tonight too, before, if I don't mention it, it was great and.
Well, thank you for doing it.
Oh, you're welcome, and we are voting tomorrow, people, um, please, please go out and vote. Um, let's take this phone call. Hi, do you have a question?
Hi, yeah, I do, I have a comment. Um, I'm just wondering, in, in Montana, I understand that our, um, salaries are fiftieth in the nation, but our teacher's salaries for the whole state are forty-seventh. And I think that we try very hard to, to, um, give all that we can to teachers and I really support them, but, you know, there are people here in Missoula who have to make a choice between food and heat and medicine and I, I don't know that it's fair. And, and school closures also are just really wrong.
Okay, thank you, did you have a question or did you?
Well, I wanna know how you're gonna address this in the future because the enrollment's dropping. And I know there's a lot of concern about schools and, and education.
So, your question is how you were, if.
How, how are you gonna cope with the, the dropping enrollment and raising the teacher's salaries? Because, uh.
At the same time.
As I understand, the new contract will go up not just this coming year, but for succeeding years, it, it continues to increase.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and, and for the general population, that's not the case. And it's not that we don't support and love our, and honor our teachers, it's that we just, you know, with working at Walmart or something, you can't keep giving and giving and, and make your own bills.
So, would you say that yours, would you support the budget proposal of laying off, I think it's twenty teachers?
Well, I hate, I hate the idea of laying off the teachers, but, you know, I don't know what else can be done when, um, there are fewer students. It's just a really, I realize it's a hard position for the school board and, and for all of us. I, I don't know, it just seems that there's an ever-increasing demand for all sorts of services other than education with special ed. There's just so much to it, I mean, how, how can you address the complexity, that's what I'd like to know.
Okay.
Because in the future, it's just gonna get harder.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Barb?
Well, I, I think the caller's right that we, it, it's a very difficult situation we're in. And it continues to get harder every year as we have more and more cuts we need to make, as we have fewer students. And, and when, um, the needs of those students get more and more complex and, and take more, take more time and we don't have the teachers to commit to it. But I think what it takes is, um, some serious consensus building throughout the community. I think it's a community problem, not just, it's not a problem of just the school district and I think we need to, um, see what we can do to collaborate more with other public agencies and the private sector to begin to.
to begin to find more creative ways of taking care of the needs we have in the district.
Okay, Bubba?
Well, you know, there's no easy answers to any of this. You know, what we need to go back and remember is the word professional, that these guys are professionals. Most professions, most people who are professions are increasing at a certain rate each year. You know, we're not, I mean, I don't think you can compare apples to apples in talking about a teacher who has gone to school and got an education and a degree, and sometimes a master's degree, and somebody who's working an hourly wage at McDonald's or Walmart. I don't think that's a fair comparison. And, you know, these guys made a decision, they sacrificed and went to school. They spent years of their life learning and years of their life teaching, and I think they deserve the raises that they're getting. So, I don't think we can compare them, you know, and I know it's a sad situation that we have people out here that are, you know, in those kind of situations. But I don't know how we can compare those two to alike. I think that's an invalid comparison.
Okay, Colleen?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, I think they covered it pretty well. You know, ranking 47th in the nation wage-wise, you know, that's not speaking too positively. But the part of that I do want to address, too, is K-5 enrollment is not still declining. So, I think that we're making a choice to, one of the proposals, anyway, of the laying off of the 10 and 1/2, IFTE K through 5 is very short-sighted because for the last several years in a row, we have had declining enrollment, K-5. And that was the impetus behind, you know, school closure. And it, you know, the kids were dropping off at 70, 80, 100, I don't know the statistics, but it was large chunks of a decline. And this year, not only did we not decline, but we went up 14 students. Now, that's, you know, nothing to jump up and down about, but I think that we do need to pay attention to that a little bit, that perhaps, you know, the decline slump is plateauing out in the K-5 level. Now, it'll, you know, roll through the middle schools and then roll through the high schools. But, so, I don't know about laying off more teachers to address that.
Okay, I think we have time for one more phone call. Let's take this one. Hi, do you have a question for our board candidates, school board candidates?
Yes, I do. I just wonder about cutting of the administration. It seems to me that they're kind of heavy in the administration department. I don't know for sure. I mean, I don't have any facts, but that's what I'm wondering about. And I understand Great Falls hasn't had a superintendent for several years, and they're not even looking for one.
Okay, we already, I think we already answered.
Well, you did answer that.
The administration.
I didn't catch it until about, oh, 10, 15 minutes ago.
Oh, we're sorry. Unless, does anybody have anything new that they want to add to that? We sort of, we sort of addressed the administration question, but we are gonna be replaying this, so.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I'm hoping to replay it in the morning for you, so.
I think we'd all be for administrative cuts. We just, you know, everybody has mentioned administrative cuts. Nobody has mentioned specific cuts in specific departments, and that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see which departments we're gonna cut and which services we're gonna take from our teachers. You know, I would hate to see us cut a curriculum department or something like that where our teachers have to work more than they're already working with what they have. So, I just want to be careful with that.
Okay, let's take this phone call here. Hi, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I haven't caught all the show, so I'm not sure if anyone's asked this question. But I wanted to know what each of the candidates' positions were on K through 8 or middle schools, because there's been a lot of studies, I feel, that show that smaller schools help keep neighborhood schools intact. And I just wondered what each candidate felt about that.
Okay, I'll start with you, Colleen, this time.
I grew up here in Missoula and had received my education here. As Bubba was talking about earlier, his wife grew up here, and part of the reason he came back here was because of the quality of education. And I was in a K-8 school, and I know, so I was, I went through that. I didn't, I don't remember when they started the middle schools here. Anyway, I guess that's not important. And I am, you know, I do believe in smaller neighborhood schools. We are talking a lot about, you know, class sizes and keeping class sizes small, and I do agree. I absolutely agree that, you know, we need to do what we can to keep class sizes small. But there's very little talk to how big do we want our schools to get, despite the fact that there's research by the loads out there that just says, you know, the smaller schools seem to be more effective across all socioeconomic levels, across, you know, a broad spectrum of levels. And so, that's something that I think this community needs to address is, in a long-range plan, even actually a fairly short-range plan, within five years, what do we want our schools to be looking like? Do we want these large K-5 schools of 500-plus kids? Or does this community support, you know, a smaller neighborhood schools? And I think that you touched, the question came up earlier about, you know, larger schools subsidizing that, and I think we need to really study that. And let's do some research on that, because I'm hearing a lot of evidence showing just all the wonderful things about keeping the school size small.
Okay, Bubba?
I don't think there's a lot of disagreement. I think anybody would be unfounded to disagree that smaller schools are tremendously better for our children. And I'm all for smaller schools, but I'm not for a smaller school system if it means cutting our teachers to do it. And, you know, when we get down to a situation where it's an either-or, that's a scary thing. And that's exactly why they were closed. We had schools that had 10, 12, 15, 17 students, and then we had schools with 25, 35, well, not 35, but 25 up to almost 30 kids. And, you know, when that was done, that leveled the classes at 24 or 23, and all of a sudden, we have manageable classes again. And it's, and we need to think of policies that are district-wide. And I don't, you know, I don't agree with shutting down schools, and I don't think anybody wants to do that. But I think with the budget, the deal we're getting from the state, it's forcing us to do things we don't want to do. And, you know, I think that's a sad situation. I think that the school board has done it right in the way that they have said, okay, we've got these two schools, we still have control over these two schools, and if the enrollment does pick back up, we did get a few more kids this year, maybe it'll continue to grow. If it does, then we can go back out and open up one of these schools and maybe work it out to where we can have that neighborhood school again, and I think that's fantastic. You know, our schools are now full, you know. If it starts growing, we're either gonna have to go back and open those up or overcrowd our schools. So, I think, I think there's, at least there's the option that we can go back and open those up, and I think that's something we'll need to look at. And I think one of these days, we will open those back up. I have every belief that we will someday be able to bring businesses to this community that bring jobs and bring people and do a better job of that. But that's not for this board to deal with. So, yeah, I'm all for small schools, but I'm for balanced budget.
Okay, Barb? Let you answer that question.
What was, what was the question?
Small schools.
K through 8.
All right, and K through 8. Yeah, actually, I went to a kindergarten through 8th grade school myself. And I think it's wonderful to have the 8th graders with the kindergarteners. I think that is a very nice situation for everybody. The issue with going away from the middle schools is the issue of teaming and whether or not we could still figure out a way to do that, because that does seem to be a fairly productive way for teaching our middle schoolers. But at the same time, I really like small schools because it's clear, the evidence is predominant, that if we don't, that the smaller the school, the less behavior problems, the less, the higher test scores, everything. And especially, you look at our high schools and our middle schools, and it's scary when you have that number, especially the middle schools, all those raging hormones in one place. They're just, they're, it's, they're too big to handle. And what we have to do, we have to add deans to our high schools, we have to add assistant principals to our middle schools. If we had smaller schools, we wouldn't have that problem. And then, I just want to make a comment on one of the earlier comments. Our schools aren't full now. Our schools are overcrowded, and we're gonna be bringing in modulators to deal with the problems we made by closing Dickinson and Roosevelt. That doesn't mean to say that I'm in favor of opening Dickinson and Roosevelt back up, because I think that would just create even more chaos. But I think in the future, we need to, we need to think ahead a little. We need to have some plan, some plan for addressing our facilities' needs and really take a look at our budget. And like I said before, we need to do much more to get the entire community involved, the city, the county, the private sector, and begin to really do some creative financing or something.
Okay, we went over, but that's okay, because there's nothing coming on after us. We can stay here, we can stay here all night. So, what's great about MCAT, but, so, thank you for coming. And all of the callers out there, thank you very much for calling and your great questions. And hopefully, everybody will get out there tomorrow and vote. Even if you don't have children in the schools, please participate in your community. These children will be taking care of you one day. So, think of it that way, even if you don't have a vested interest in it. But everybody, please go out and vote.
There's levies to vote on.
There's levies, that's right, it's money.
Everybody's got a vested interest.
Exactly, so, so please go out and vote tomorrow, and I believe the polls open at what time?
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Okay, so, that'll be it, and hopefully, we can do this again. Next time we have some school board candidates come up, we'll try to start doing this on a regular basis. I think it was great. Okay, thank you, and good night.